Good evening. My name is Keith Romano. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the Inland Wetlands Commission meeting for the town of Monroe is March 22nd, 2023, and the time is 7:11 PM. I'd like to take roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's meeting.
One alteration.
What happened to that?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in terms of our work for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take roll call of the members of the commission and staff present during tonight's hybrid meeting. Please answer here at present, starting with myself, Keith Romano, Chairman, Eric Lindstrom, Vice Chair, B.J. Hall, Secretary, Jim Stewart, who is a licensed engineer and surveyor in the state of Connecticut, Ross Masaraco, Ryan Kelly is absent, Rick Schultz, town planner, Cheryl Valerie is not present.
No, Sarah.
Stress it, Cheryl Valerie, sorry, and Sarah Stroud, Recording Secretary.
Present.
All right, before we start, I'll read our mission statement and how the meeting will proceed. The objective and purpose of the inland wetlands commission is provided for the overall protection and preservation of the inland wetlands and water courses within the town of Monroe. Meeting procedure: Please note that this meeting is being conducted utilizing electronic equipment in compliance with state law, Public Act 21-1. As such, this meeting is being recorded and will be available to the public in compliance with state law. If you are attending remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless speaking. Anyone participating remotely should state their name and title, if applicable, at the onset of each occasion that such person is speaking. All votes taken during which any member of this body or participating remotely shall be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. The chat features will not be utilized nor considered during this meeting. In the normal course of our meetings, we will hear public hearings and other applications. The protocol for public hearings is to have an applicant make a presentation to the commission during which and after which the commission will be asking the applicant questions. I ask that the applicants keep their presentations as concise as possible. The commission will then review town staff and other independent comments. The meeting will then be open for public comment. I will ask that all comments we made to the chair or commission, after any and all comments pro in opposition or for of a general nature are made, the applicant will be given an opportunity to respond. Please keep comments or questions direct, or a timelimit of three minutes may be imposed. It is not necessary that the applicant respond, but generally in their best interest to do so. There will be no further opportunity for new questions unless new materials entered in as evidence, testimony during their response. Please keep all comments pro and con specific to inland wetlands related matters. Other applications that do not involve public hearing will follow a similar format with the exception that there will be no public comments allowed. Meeting follows our proposed agenda unless otherwise amended. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, this is the general public participation portion of the of the meeting. Anybody here want to speak to the to the commission in a general nature about anything related to wetlands other than anything that's before us now or soon to be in front of us? Regular activities, public hearings, IWC 2022-16, 417 Main Street, be continued to the April 12th meeting. Application hearing determinations, none, deliberation on completed hearings, completed items on this agenda, IWC 2023-02, 127 Main Street.
Okay, yeah, you have to recuse yourself, Mr. Chairman. You have directed staff to write a favorable resolution. A draft copy is in front of each member. I will read it, and then we need a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote. Regarding IWC 2023-02 for 127 Main Street, whereas the Wetlands Commission has considered an application by solely engineering on behalf of ULLC, applicant owner, for the development of seven multi-story apartment buildings, four detached garages, clubhouse, maintenance building, and associated site improvements, including the construction of a sidewalk along the entire frontage of property and installation of stormwater basin, septic field and landscaping within the upland review area on property located at 127 Main Street. The project proposes the alteration of 50 square feet of wetlands and 84,108 square feet of upland review area. Property contains 19.6 acres, of which 2.4 acres is wetlands. There are 2.7 acres of upland review area. Commission receives the following application submissions: inland wetlands application, Connecticut DEP reporting form, list of the butters within 100 feet, engineering report prepared by solely engineering dated 1/9/23, plan set title proposed site development prepared by solely engineering dated 1/09/23 revised through 3/08/23, consisting of 27 sheets, exhibits 1 through 8 as reference and into the record during the public hearing. Whereas considering the above listed submission, commission made the following findings and determination. One, the project proposes to construct seven detached multi-story apartment buildings, four detached garages, maintenance building, clubhouse, sidewalks within the upland review area, and within a designated wetlands area and miscellaneous improvements. A total of 50 square feet of wetlands alterations proposed for the Route 25 sidewalk. Total of 84,108 square feet of upland review area is proposed for the development. Two, commission finds that the property currently contains two conservation areas on the property. The first amendment has submitted a letter confirming that the proposal will not impact said conservation areas. Three, commission noted the property is currently being excavated under a filling grading permit in accordance with the conditions of approval. Four, commission finds the property is not okay in the special flood hazard area. Five, commission finds the property is adjacent to Aquarian Water Company in the state of Connecticut, properties to the west, and private residential parcels to the south, east, and north. Commission finds that the project proposes the installation of above-ground stormwater quality basement which will capture and treat the water quality prior to entering the wetlands. Seven, the commission during its review noted the following: Commission requested the applicant provided a revised landscaping plan addressing staff recommendations and providing additional native plantings. B, staff recommended the installation of wetlands markings and to be delineated on the final plan for locations determined by staff. C, adequate dust control must be maintained at all times to minimize impact to the adjacent wetlands. Applicant has submitted inadequate operations and maintenance plan. Eight, commission finds that the application is complete pursuant to Section 70 of the regulations. And nine, the commission agrees there are no prudent or feasible alternatives. And as indicated, Mr. Chairman, a motion and second is in order, subject to the following conditions, and then a roll call vote. One, condition: adherence to the recommendation as outlined in the consultant engineer's report dated March 21st, 2023, including submission of a 38,000 completion bond. Two, adherence to the recommendations as outlined in the wetlands enforcement officers' report dated 3/9/23. And three, submission of a quarterly status report to the staff inland wetlands commission during site preparation by solely engineering.
I make a motion to approve application IWC 2023-2, File 1, Number 1428, subject to the conditions as noted in the decision resolution.
Second.
We need to do a roll call vote. Okay. Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Stewart?
Aye.
Mr. Masaraco?
Was this discussed two weeks ago because I wasn't here?
Yeah, but Ross, you can indicate for the record that you feel qualified to vote because you you know the project and you feel qualified to vote.
Okay, and I also vote in favor, so it's four to zero. That's your basis.
Let me get. To Agent Actuary Reports, IWC Agent Actuary Reports, violation updates.
138 Barn Hill. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this issue is under reviewed by special counsel. So staff is recommending that we go to item number two.
Okay. 138 Monroe Turnpike.
And Attorney Brennan is available for update.
Hi, this is Attorney Brennan. I am the administrator for the estate of John J. Stofan. The 1380 Monroe Turnpike belongs to the estate. On March 6th, I met with Cheryl Valerie and Frank Schrute at 1380, and we discussed the wetlands on the property and the violations that this commission has issued. Ms. Valerie did provide myself and Mr. Schrute with a map that stated the that outlined the wetlands as well as the upland review areas and showed us both the areas that cannot be disturbed without the proper permits. And I think that was was definitely helpful in understanding, you know, what activities can occur on the property that are not violated of the inland wetland regulations. Also, tonight, Frank Schrute is in attendance, and I know he wanted to speak to the commission about his activities and perhaps provide some more background about that.
My friend's over here. Okay, my name is Frank Schrull. I live at 1366 Monroe Turnpike. Okay, my name is Frank Schrull. I live at 1366 Monroe Turnpike. My property, I currently farm in Monroe. I'm a recognized farm in Monroe, also on the state level and federal level. I do farm a small portion of the property on 1380. I've been doing that for probably close to 20 years. A friend of mine, Pat O'Hara, which I'm sure you guys know well, has always directed me as to, you know, what I was, as far as the farming staffs in town, what I could do and what I couldn't do. Like I said, I probably farm about an acre or so on my portion of the estate. And like I said, I've been doing this probably for probably 15, 20 years. I have a side business that I do several farmers markets. I do one being the Monroe Farmers Market up here every Friday afternoon. I don't know if anybody's attended that or seen the activities going on over there. I got the white box truck usually parked up on the lawn. So from what I understand, I have the regulations from the state that I, you know, that allows you to work in in wetlands and not necessarily in wetlands, but you can be in the zone area. You can be farming operations in there. So let me give you a little history of this estate. It's been it's been in probate since 2015. So it was divided up between I inherited the 15 and a half acre. It's like a 32-acre parcel. So I inherited the 15 plus whatever in the front of it, and Rose, the daughter, was willing to back part of it. Her being a pet officier, she was also the fiduciary of the of the estate. And in my opinion, she, well, she, her attorney, which was also her lawyer, or her, yeah, her cousin, they proceeded to just, in my view, she just wanted to somehow deny me of legal possession of this property. So they actually went on the property one time, and they went around just looking for something to just kind of stick it to me. So I, at the time, I had hired a lawyer, and he had called me one day and says, yeah, they were on the property, they were over there at 1380 even on a turnpike, and they said that you had dug a pond over there. It's a pond, I didn't dig no pond, so I have a regular job, so I got home from work. At the time, Denise Halsted was still here, so I called her up, and we went back and forth. We were, so it's like, what pond is she talking about? I sent her a picture of her pond I thought she was referring to. She says, that's the one that, you know, that's the one they're claiming you dug. I'm like, that pond, John Stofan dug that pond. I'm thinking I was either, I lived in Monroe since I was 12 years old. I think he dug, had that pond dug when I was either in high school or just recently got out. Says, I didn't dig the pond, so that's, I don't know if that was part of the, that was part of the whole thing that they, you know, brought these violations against me. That's that. I mean, as far as some of the other stuff, though, I farm this, so the new woman now come over there in the wintertime, there's a pond, you come up, there's several ponds on the property. I use some of these ponds for watering my plants and stuff. I take a pond, I draw water out there, I feed my irrigation system. This particular pond was just all, over the years, everything was just falling in, branches. John had planted these pine trees. We used to have a Christmas tree farm on the property when I was a kid. And now everything is, you know, these are 50, 60 years ago, he did all this stuff. Everything's big, and it's just falling down all over the place. You know, the storms we've had in the last 10 years, this stuff is just all over the place. So all I did is I went around the pond, and I cleaned it up, took all the branches, a lot of branches in the pond, and took all that stuff out, and I cleaned it up. I did cut a few trees down around the pond. So she can go, oh, you keep doing this? I'm like, I farm here. I says, this property was given to me, I farm here. I says, Pat O'Hara told me that the regulations in Monroe, the wetlands as far as farming, mirror those with the state. And I pulled this data off the internet the other day. It allows me to do these things, because you can work in a pond under 3 acres. I can give you this. I leave you with this, and you guys can go over this. So that's that's some of the other violations. She was saying that, you know, I cut some trees down over the years. For sure I have. I mean, the place is just an absolute mess, and I cleaned it up. I'm in the fire department, who's actually a huge fire hazard, so some of the areas I cleaned up. Are they in the zone? I didn't actually go on wetlands, but are they in the zone? There's a lot of wetlands on the property. I have a map. You guys, if you want, I have a bigger map. Or I brought it with me. If you want a view of it, welcome to see it. If not. I think that's it in a nutshell. Oh, I honestly, there's one other. I did put up a hoop house on the property, like a big greenhouse, and I didn't get a permit. I did that like probably seven years ago, part of my farming operation. I did ask somebody in town, all, do I really need a permit? And they, well, what is it, just hoops? And they said, yeah, it's not a permanent structure. They said, yeah, you can go ahead and do it. So I probably need to get a permit for that. But other than that, that's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions. So what happened was the, just to go on the estate, the fidelity and or her attorney were actually relieved of their duties by the probate judge because they were just, you know, this place, this was going nowhere, so Attorney Tom Brennan was put in their place by the probate judge about a year ago. So that's why this thing has just been going on for so long. And the other, the attorney, the original attorney for the estate, she just didn't want me to, they wanted to create a baby, make it look like I have caused so much financial damage to the estate that somehow they could deny me of it. That's how, that's my opinion of it anyway. But they were removed from their positions, like I said, from the probate judge about a year ago or so. So here we are. I was working with Denise Halsted, and then she left, and then, and so, yeah, that's why this thing's been dragging on for a long time.
Let's ask some questions. My first question is, I don't know if it's your answer or if it's on our side or what, but all the violations are on my portion?
My portion, yes.
So the other part that's, there's nothing, we're not discussing anything over here.
That's correct.
As far as you might understand it, yeah.
That's correct.
Last, the last week or last time, you gave out that pamphlet, which, you still have that? Do you have it?
I didn't bring it.
Does anybody have that that B.J. gave us? It was color printed? Because it does explain, if you guys haven't read it. That was really, it's the it's the best that I've ever heard of an explanation of what's allowed.
And it is a state document.
Right, right. The town doesn't actually have a mirror, right? We don't have a, we don't own, we just go by the state. So there's not, so when you said before, like, the town, you know, it's similar, the town doesn't have it.
Oh, I see. That's state for Pat O'Hara that told me at the time?
So to go over this, did you have something that you wanted to say?
I was going basically the same place you did.
Okay, all right. And you have not, you do not have forestry on the property?
Well, when John had it, he had forestry. When I tried to take possession, my property at 1366 is, I have the right to farm, and it's considered farm. The properties are, you know, they're adjacent to 11380's, right?
What's the other, so the other one is forest?
1380, John used to have it.
But you must have lost it if he's not 25 acres, right?
Well, in the actual, it's probably still current with forestry. I don't know. Most of the trees have all fallen down, and it's not really much of anything. You don't have.
Yeah, if you don't have, if you don't have the right growth status.
He really doesn't now.
And it's not, it's not, so we're not going to be discussing anything to do with forestry. All right, there was a section that said, what, right?
There are certain things that require permits even on a farm. I think you noted one of them, I'm sure that that was the buildings. But there are also.
Yes, it's around the.
I'm missing it. I think.
I wasn't. I can, you guys, I can.
Whatever, say.
This is what, you know, I got out of state.
Okay, what agriculture and forestry activities require a permit? Get this out here. It's only two, it's only a couple paragraphs. I'll just read it to everybody. The IWWA states that a regulated activity, that a regulated activity requires a permit. The IWWA defines a regulated activity as any operation within, within or use of a wetland or water course involving removal or deposition of material or any obstruction, construction, alteration, or pollution of such wetlands or water course. So the following agriculture and forestry activities are are regulated activities. So these are the things that you can, that you need a permit for to do on a farm or in a forest. Construction of farm ponds greater than three acres. So if that pond in question is less than three acres.
It is less than three acres.
And it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't think it even matters. Construction of farm ponds of three acres or less not essential to the farming operation. So if that pond is not being used for the farming operation, will be.
Yeah.
Well, will be. You're saying it was dug seven years ago?
No, no, no. No, those those ponds have been there since like.
No, what I'm trying, so what, oh, you're saying it wasn't even done recently? Never mind. I'm getting confused with something else you had said. Okay. Construction of farm ponds of three acres or less not essential to their farming operation. Construction of roads not directly related to the farming operation. Erection of buildings not directly related to the farming operation. Now, that's not a, that's not a building permit. This is, we're talking about a wetland permit. Okay, for construction. Erection of building, okay, I said that. Filling of wetlands, so any filling of any wetlands whatsoever. Reclamation of wetlands, which, what is the definition of that? Anybody?
Say it again?
Reclamation of wetlands. Does that mean like?
Claiming.
Like taking fill out if it was filled in or debris?
Yeah, shaking it out. Like doing a garter.
That could be, if you're saying you're clearing around, that could be.
Branches that had fallen in there, I took them out.
I was saying, this is, this is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to read through this and see what could possibly apply so we can, we can analyze all this entire situation and come up with.
Sure.
So reclamation of wetlands, so that could possibly be a sticking point, right? Depending on what you did, we don't have a report or pictures or a site visit to look at it. But let me just continue. Filling of water courses with, filling of water courses with continual flow, I don't know if that, right. Reclamation of water courses with continuous flow, I'm sorry, okay, relocation of water courses with continuing flow, no, that was not right. Clearcutting of timber for reasons other than the expansion of agricultural crop land. So, so that just means actually these plants, not even animals, right? So I don't know if that's considered clear.
So you've you've clear cut around the pond?
I did really clear, but there's these big pine trees, so I just kind of cut a few smaller trees so I can walk around the pond.
Selective cutting, clear cut.
Yeah. I wish I had it on my.
No, but that's, I think that's, it's pretty easy to to clarify in the field, okay?
So I think she, the Valerie, the woman, she took some pictures of that.
Cheryl.
Cheryl, yep.
So so clearcutting of timber for reasons other than the expansion of the agricultural crop land.
Mining.
And then the next one is mining of topsoil, peat, sand, gravel, or similar materials for the purpose of sale. Doesn't sound like we're doing that. So let me just go through real quickly the, the activities that don't require a permit. Okay, in recognition of the important role of agriculture and forestry to Connecticut's economy and quality of life, the IWWA states that certain farming activities are permitted as of right regardless of their impact or effect to inland wetlands or water courses. Further, these activities may be associated with existing operations and uses as well as new operations needs. The following agriculture and forestry activities are permitted as of right. Grazing, farming, nurseries, gardening, harvesting of crops, constructions of farm ponds of three acres or less essential to the farming operation, construction of roads or erection of buildings directly related to the farming operation, clearcutting of timber.
For the expansion of agricultural crop land.
And mining of topsoil, peat, sand, gravel, or similar to, except for the purpose of sale. So it's basically just whatever contradicts the other thing. So that's probably what you have, probably almost the same thing. So I think, in my opinion, and this is the last I have to say about this, is that it's really just a matter of really what was cut down and what was cleaned up around the pond.
Around, I'd say, in that whole front of the property.
Right. So I think that's the part that's in question, just clarify off of this. So anybody else have any?
Yeah, I know there's a road, the driveway. I believe there was a fill in there to raise the driveway. Was there some time ago? Because that that goes through the wetlands there.
Oh, so the driveway goes up to the house, and there's another cut. That was always there. When I was a kid, that was always there. Okay. We always, John had that, that was, ever since I've been here, and I've been here since I was 12, that old roadway was there.
Okay. So then that's probably covered.
I was thinking, you're saying this is the driveway to the house?
No, there's a, so, there's a driveway to the house, I don't.
There's a house to the back of the.
Yeah, there's a rental house up in the back.
What's the purpose of this driveway we're discussing?
To gain access. So the other, the other one you're talking about is, comes off the main driveway and goes up. It's actually, I use it when I drive my tractor up there.
Which was in existence before the regulations, as I even. I don't know how we could, if that matters, but.
Could be. Could be, if no work was done to it.
There was nothing done to it.
Okay, okay. I, I think, I think though we have to remember here that that property is still owned by the state. So I know.
But I had a, so I, through this whole process, I hired a lawyer who was a good land use lawyer. And he told me, he says, technically, the day that John died, you became the owner of that property, the part that he gave you. I'm not, you know, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a land use lawyer. That's what he told me. So he had actually brought that up to the probate job.
Well, these, these topics fringe on, on not being relevant to the situation at hand. So we're, I mean, it happened a couple of times, touching on the legalities of ownership.
Right.
It's not a, it's not a wetlands related matter, right?
Right, that's true.
I don't want to go down a road to something that's irrelevant.
If it's not, it, yes, directly relates to use of the wetland, or the things that he's done to the wetland.
Yeah, but that's based on the land. The land is classified as something, not who owns it.
But who owns it is responsible for that and would have to give permission.
Been there for, for however many years, doing everything.
But I, then we have to touch on the legal. I think Attorney Brennan might have a different opinion on that.
No, what I'm saying is that I don't want to go off of something that's not related to. He's talking about ownership and, and inheritance and all this other stuff that.
Shouldn't matter to us, but technically.
It matters to the situation, but not to what we're trying to accomplish and, you know, to here, to just wetlands really it matters. I don't want to go off too far.
Technically, since the ownership is with the estate, we should be talking to the attorney for the estate. And, no offense, but I'm not seeing you at all for the, from the legal aspect of it. Same discussion, but the owner of the property, the estate, is the.
He could be the owner.
And the representative of the owner. I'm sorry, I'm pointing to you in the zoom.
Yes, I.
So if we could just hear from you, if you're okay with the conversation by the, I'm going to have to say the potential inheritor, and the things that he's doing and understanding the legality and illegality, I think it's important that you understand that also.
I, yes, Christian, I agree, and it, the properties that fill in within the estate, I think it's important for Mr. Schrute to be here because he is in fact on the property and has an effect. The violations that the commission has issued were based on Mr. Schrute's activities. And I think it's important that we all get on the same page about what are the violations exactly and how we can remediate them.
Right, and I'm, I'm not sure with the current violations. Cheryl had a cease and desist order, she was.
Yeah, could you give us the top, the, the general nature of all the violations, Rick?
Yeah, I, I don't have that.
She gave us a list and one of them was the road, one of them was the hoop house. She also mentioned I had some firewood dropped off in the front of the property. And it's in the zoning area. It's not too far from the pond. I have a friend, and she was saying, oh, there's no, you know, you're selling firewood. I said, no, I'm not selling firewood. I have a friend that has a side business doing tree work, and he's been bringing me trees and that's where he puts them because it's just a convenient way to pull off the road. He dumps them there and we just, I use the wood for my own use. I don't sell it or anything, so.
But even the storage of it in that, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, I mean, I can move it. I, I do want to move it because to me it's a little unsightly. It's right on 11, kind of. I'm trying to clean it. I'm trying to make the place a little more.
So I would think that would fall into a non-permitted use because, you know, you're not forestry, you're farming.
Technically, it's farm. It couldn't, it wouldn't, I would think it would fall into farming because it's, even if I was selling it.
And it's not, it's not derived from a plant or animal. You know?
Yeah.
And a tree farm sells trees whole. Right? So it's a for, it's a forestry.
Right, right.
So you're not, you don't have a forestry designation.
No.
So I would say that that would, if you get that out of there, would obviously be an easy thing to do to, to get one thing off the list. Right?
Yeah.
Just get it out of there.
I'll get it off.
Now what else, you were, you were going on with this, you started talking about the road, which we really.
Historically wouldn't have any data, I don't think, to go back to.
Historically, probably not. Like even if they added a foot of process on top or whatever.
Really, no, to be honest, I threw a few, some wood chips on there because it was so muddy in the last month. That, that's, I hardly, that's like the first time I ever did anything to it, just because it's been so wet.
History goes back to.
Right.
Chief founding, first person who's updated to what Cheryl Valerie found. So that's not a very deep history.
No, so, you know, I don't know if we have, if we're going to be very fruitful trying to discuss the road. You know, with a lot of.
It's not really, it's not paid.
And it's worth discussing. Okay, so we're discussing between ourselves.
Okay.
It, it sounds like Cheryl's on top of it.
Right, but there was other violations that you knew of that you wanted to talk about?
She was investigating, so.
Okay, so that's as far as you know.
I have no, without Cheryl and running us through her list, we don't really have much to say.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, I suggest for bringing up the next meeting, you're going to say it's not applicable.
Right, we're doing the next meeting, let's see. Let's see if anybody on this side, is anybody here have any questions or anything they want to discuss about this?
I just need clarification on what the actual violations are, because based on what we read through, doesn't sound like there's a whole lot, and then maybe some of them are not relevant because if this, this pathway, road, whatever you want to call it, predates, it, I don't know what we can do about that.
I think the only thing that is really, to me, that I can see is in question right now is, is what did he do around the pond as far as cleaning up? And is there, is there debris piled up that's not natural? Like, you know what I mean? Like if they piled, they dumped wood chips in a pile next to the edge or?
Piles of trees to look cut up.
Right, so anything like that, that would have been, you know, an activity that would not be farming. I think that's really, it sounds to me like that's what it boils down to. He's got a.
He's got a firewood pile.
The hoop house would somehow have to be, you know, a derivative of the farming application to not be for us. But, you know, building department would have to chime in on their side.
Yeah, there, it's, it's grandfathered in under zoning and building, three-year list.
So we're not even worried about the hoop house and all that.
Yeah, well, it's up to what, because it's, it's in the regulated area, so you have to determine.
Based on this.
Yeah, if it's being, someone has to, has to certify, I guess, or inspect that it's being used for a farming operation. If it's just sitting there.
Not being used or whatever, or he's got a classic car in there or something, then that's a different story.
That's right.
So we have to have, you know, at one point, some kind of determination as to what that thing is doing.
Yeah, so we'll go through the list at the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
I can approach.
Alright.
I, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to do, yeah, we're going to continue this.
Yeah, that'll be April 12.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
All right, Attorney Brennan, April 12.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright. 129 Barn Hill Road.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, we want to continue that to the next meeting, Joe.
Okay, that's the one with the barn, they built the barn?
Yeah.
And the green and the back, okay. Alright, general discussion, other, we'll start with, we have a resignation letter from Clark Gingrich. Can no longer serve in the position on the board. And hopefully he'll be replaced soon so that we have a full board again. And I don't know how long he was on, he was here before me, but, no.
Couple years.
What?
Couple.
More than a couple?
You think? Yeah.
There's been at least three, I think, right?
Yes.
Was he, was he, did he start after you?
I think he did.
Did he start after?
At the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Good guess.
Definitely after me.
The five years, six years?
I don't.
I think this is not really important, I was thinking about, but we would like to, you know.
It's been a few.
The, the, the thank you out into the, into the universe for Clark's service on the board. Alright, so 64 Cambridge Drive, update by NSAFE. That was.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, all the members have the latest report in front of them. We have representatives of the owner and NSAFE.
Can I share my screen with you folks?
Sorry, Bill, I forgot about the sharing.
Oh, worries.
You're getting that set up or should we just walk through?
It'll, it'll take a minute.
Fair enough. You can hear me okay though?
Yeah, very good.
Yeah. Great, thanks.
Now, Rick, do they have the presentation in front of them or the written report on the?
Written report from today, yesterday.
Or Monday.
We have the presentation here at the back.
Maybe I'll get started and when they get connected, we'll, we'll catch up. That's okay. Well, good evening. Thanks for having me here. I'm Bill Hyple. I'm an engineer with NSAFE. And just going to provide a quick update on the project at 64 Cambridge slash 4 Independence Drive. Thank you, Mr. Karp and Mr. Kenny for coming also. I will defer to you at some point later on in the presentation to provide a little bit more detail about what some of the current activities are. For the agenda, just I'll, I'll try to do a real brief introduction, but a kind of an overall summary of the project. Touching on the mixed debris pile, it's not the main subject, but I'll just touch on that, give you an update there, touch on the wetland. They get into a little bit more detail about the pile processing and about the wetland. And then here, I'll defer to Mr. Kenny and Mr. Karp and let them pick that up. We can do questions at the end, but certainly if something comes up, feel free to ask questions.
Bill, you all set to go?
I should be good. If you are there, let me try this. I'll share my screen. It still says host, disabled participant, screen share. So it kind of suggests that on your end, it's not enabled. Alright, I'll move on to my, the second slide so you see the agenda slide. And then after that, here's the introduction and the summary. So really.
Hey, Bill, excuse me, you're now the host if you showed up on my screen.
Okay. Wonderful. Let me find the correct screen to give you folks. I think it's this one. Okay, are you seeing the screen now?
Yes.
Very good.
Very good. Alright, so let's, again, back to the agenda. We talked about this a little bit. We move on to the next slide. And it's a pretty, you know, complete introduction and summary of the project in full here. You folks provided approvals back in 2021 and 2022 for the wetland and site restoration plans. The site work began in May of 2022. We came on board, NSAFE came on board in June of 2022 to observe the restoration activities, both the quarry filling and the wetland irrigation. In late September, it reached a milestone in that the quarry pit was filled to elevation 411. And that's about the groundwater elevation, using the native site materials, stone dust and soil from the site. And that was a condition of the PZ approval, to use the native site materials to get out of the groundwater. After that, they started using the mixed debris pile to fill, completed that in late January. And they filled to elevation 423 with the remains of that mixed debris pile. I'll show some pictures later on, pretty impressive what they did with that. In the wetlands, it was, they were irrigating really through the summer, June through October, filling, you know, it was moist conditions through the summer, it was very dry summer, then it got pretty wet in the, come fall. But the earthwork and some of the cold weather disrupted the irrigation from the well. They were intermittently pumping from the quarry area, I think from November through February. And Arnold and Bill Kenny can fill us in more. And there's certainly been a lot more irrigation and even flooding of the area as of late, as of early March. And even, even now, I'll show you some pictures later on. And then again, hopefully we'll get some more details later on from Mr. Kenny and Mr. Karp. Just real quickly, I know this isn't your main topic, but you may want to know what's been happening there. So starting in early October and again until late January, they processed that full old mixed debris pile. Also known as the stratified pile. And it, material required crushing and sorting. It was concrete and brick and stone in there. So it all went through crushers and sorters. It all got mixed together, segregated into, to meet a certain geotechnical specification, three and a half inch minus material. And then it was spread throughout that quarry, it's about three acres, and there's about 12 feet of material there now, from elevation 411 to elevation 423. That's about 58,000, 60,000, you know, it's hard to be very accurate at that scale of cubic yards of material placed there. Now, one of our original estimate was 100,000 cubic yards, and it's not unusual for a pile of material just kind of dumped there to shrink as it's placed and compacted. So we think that's why that there's a inconsistent number there. The material that we observed, we were out there a couple of days a week throughout the whole process. The folks on site were obviously there full-time processing it, and nobody observed anything that was really inconsistent with the approval. There had been testing of the pile before the work was done. It came out okay, it met all the state criteria, and that's what we observed. And here's just a picture back when they started processing it back in October. This is the pile to the right. This is the former quarry pit now filled to elevation 411, plus or minus. I call out this white granite vein here, this is kind of a landmark. So you can see this is at the northerly end of this mixed debris pile. And then we fast forward to now, a couple of days ago. And you see that granite vein, and this is just all flattened out. So all, whatever, 60,000 some odd cubic yards of material from this area was all processed and placed up into the quarry, bringing the elevation up to roughly 425 or 423. So we'll move on to the summary, more interested. Pumping, we mentioned that there were, pumping was done earlier over the summer. About 200,000 gallons, we figure was pumped from the well up to the wetlands. So there was the one, and I'll show you a picture in a minute. You may recall that there was like a one or one and a half inch PVC hose that went up to the wetlands. And then there were zones, there were garden hoses that came off of that. You'll see that illustrated in just a second. They stopped pumping from the well in October for a variety of reasons, weather, construction was in the way. And then they were pumping, I think I mentioned, from the quarry runoff since December. But they really started pumping pretty heavily, I believe, in February. And then the wetland areas were moist in January, but come March, they were flooded. And I'll show you what I mean by moist and flooded. The first year of the zones. So originally they were pumping from the well, pipeline, PVC pipe just ran up here. And they had timers, pardon me, so they had hoses coming off at five locations with timers. So if the water being pumped, we'd go to different zones throughout the course of the day. So this, back in January, the end of January is what looked like it's zone one. It was just moist. If you kicked the leaves over, the soil was moist. Fast forward to a couple of days ago, and there's probably eight inches of water. That's totally flooded and in and out. Similarly, zone two was just moist back in January. And that's now, in fact, it overtopped my boot at one point. I stopped, I stopped going in. I didn't, not inspect all five zones because it was going over my boots at that point. So a whole lot of water up there, which was really interesting. And where is it coming from? It's pumping it from this quarry runoff base. And now, this is in accordance with their stormwater management plan. The only pumping, I understand, when it's not raining and the water's clear. So they've got a big diesel pump here, they fire up, and they pump it up to six inch hose up into the wetlands, where obviously it is spreading throughout that well and the rural pool area, as far as I can tell. And we're going to hear a lot more about that hopefully in just a minute. I did see this pizometer out there. Again, this is for measuring water elevation. And I'm assuming this is part of the overall plan to monitor, you know, experiment and, and figure out what's going on in the well and then how to make sure it stays sustainable. And with that, I would like to hand it over and defer to Mr. Karp and Mr. Kenny. Maybe they can explain what this grand experiment is doing. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Bill. Rick, if you mind sharing my screen, this is Chris Palowski, Civil Engineer, Massalian Engineering. Here on behalf of 64 Cambridge Drive and 4 Independence Drive. I'm actually not going to be talking tonight. Bill, Kenny. I'm actually not going to be talking tonight. Bill Kenny, a wetland scientist, is online, and we'll be walking you all through the update.
Good evening. This is Bill Kenny, Principal William Kenny Associates, professional wetland scientist and soil scientist. And here on behalf of the applicant, we've been conducting monitoring and inspections of the wetland restoration activities. And I thought I'd give you a little bit of background with regard to those activities and then review briefly the objectives and the, and the current results that we have.
Bill has to come off the session. Bill?
It's fine. You can leave this picture.
You have to engage.
Sorry, Bill, you can go ahead.
Okay. So a little bit of background, the, as you might recall, this, there's two wetland areas in the eastern port, northeastern portion of the property. They run north to south. They parallel each other. There's a bedrock ridge separating them. And maybe the separation between the wetland systems is ranges, it's about 100 feet maybe on average. The wetland on the eastern end is, has not appeared to have been impacted from the historic quarry activities, but the wetland on the western end, the area closest to the quarry, was impacted. And the primary impact was the draining of that wetland. In the wetland, you're looking at it right now. It's a nice quality wetland, has great diversity of trees, shrubs, and ground cover. That's not all very evident right now with the, because we're in, not in the growing season. You can certainly see the trees and the shrubs, but the ground cover is not evident, but it's a very good quality wetland. However, the water was missing as a result of the quarry activity. Often, wetlands are drained by removing water from wetlands. People put in pipes and ditches and things like that, and that's been the most common way that people drain wetlands over many years of development. But this, this wetland was drained in a little bit different way by taking a watershed area of land that, that collected and drained rainwater to the wetland, and that the quarry work removed that watershed area. So the wetland was getting far less water draining to it. So it was drained by preventing water from reaching it. So through your review process and all the documentation that was provided by the applicant over the last couple of years, it was, you approved a plan that included both short term and long term restoration activities. And the restoration activities were activities to reintroduce water to this wetland. And in the long term, it, it means to continue to fill that quarry area so that you rebuild a hill that can collect the, and reestablish a watershed of equal size of what previously existed and collect rainwater and direct it to that wetland and have more of a natural drainage pattern to support the water conditions of that well. Recognizing that the work to restore that watershed is going to take some time, years, it was agreed that in the short term, water would be pumped to the wetland to rehydrate it, and that's what's been happening over the last year. And as Bill mentioned, during the growing season, water was pumped from a well. We monitored that and as, and we observed the same things that Bill noted. We found that the soil was beginning to be saturated, but it, this wetland, I should say that we have, and remind you that this area was not only just a wetland, but it's a vernal pool as well, a vernal pool wetland. And what's important about a vernal pool wetland is that more than just having saturated soils, you want to have soils with ponded water. And, and lucky enough, the wetland to the east is also a vernal pool wetland. And so we, we have a reference area. We have the wetland immediately adjacent to the impacted wetland. We have a non-impacted wetland and an impacted wetland, so we can compare them, and it's helpful to compare water levels when they occur, the depths that they occur. There's other factors, but in general, the two wetlands are, are similar with the depths of water that, that you would expect. So this past, during the past growing season of 2022, we had saturated soil conditions, but we didn't have ponded conditions. So I suggested that the pumping be increased, particularly with vernal full breeding season arriving. So this past winter, additional water was pumped into the wetland system. And this is the result that you're looking at. And Chris, do you have the photos available that, that I took today of the, the two wetland systems? The impacted wetland on the left and the non-impacted wetland on the right?
Yes, I do. If Bill from EnSafe were in mind, thank you.
Online, we're seeing great success with the, I should have said that at the beginning, with the restoring.
It should be up there.
Oh, Michael, are you doing it through the laptop or?
Yeah, through the laptop.
Yeah, put it on. It's not going on. If you hold it back.
Yeah, I think, Bill from EnSafe doesn't, you host again, maybe?
Oh, Bill's going to be on that? Okay.
I have it, I have it right here. It's not showing on screen currently.
No, that's right. I'm making Bill again. No.
Take it back from Bill? Does he have to release it?
Yeah, he did release it. Yeah, I stopped sharing, so you should be able to pick it up, I think.
I have the photos available. I could try to share.
Yeah, let me make you host then.
I'll just turn my screen. That's easier for all of you. I'll be able to see.
I can almost see it from here.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if people can, you all can see that.
That's good, man. Phil, you have it? Should I give it to you?
I don't have the ability yet. It says host disabled participant share, screen sharing. Not yet. No, still do not have the ability.
Hey, Chris, you want to just hand your laptop to everybody on the?
Yeah, we can do that.
This is first time.
What we're finding is that the water conditions in the impacted wetland are nearly identical to those in the non-impacted wetland. So it's very exciting to see this. It's a great success at this point.
On the left side of the screen is the, there's two wetlands. It's Bill alluded to on the eastern side of the site. These are both up above on the top of the rock ledge, if you will, there. And the left picture that you're looking at is the well and system that is closest to the quarry floor. And then the picture on the right is over a berm or ridge, which is the un-impact or non-impact of well that Bill is referring to. Sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Yep. Yeah, the water depths range up to about a foot in depth and average maybe six inches where there's ponding water.
Over 20 inches, at least one spot, Bill. I got my foot.
Okay. Yeah, it's a big area. We didn't walk. Good to know. I'll put that in the records.
That's a hole, I think.
So that's pretty much what I have to report at this time, and please answer any questions that you might have.
You have a sense of the volume of water that's been pumped up there?
No, I don't. No.
You're kind of monitoring the drawdown.
Chris, try to the other side of the laptops. You know, I think that's not. I'll put your memory stick in the other side. I think that was what the problem was.
There is a natural surface outlet from the wetland area. So if there is excess, excess water, it drains from the wetland area. So you don't, because if you didn't have that outlet, if, if the land rose up several feet in every direction, you could over inundate the wetland, like create a condition like a beaver does when he builds a dam and end up killing all the trees. But, but the wetland has an outlet, a release valve, essentially a natural release valve that prevents the wetland from being over hydrated. We're going to be continuing to monitor, monitor the wetland and particularly for water conditions and for the, see if perhaps we get some breeding of vernal pool species. It's been a number of years where the wetland has not had standing water. So we're not sure what we're going to find this year with regard to breeding activity. And, but again, it's great that we have the reference wetland immediately to the east where there has been breeding in the past in that wetland. So we'll be able to compare the reference wetland area, the undisturbed wetland area to the area that we're restoring.
Bill, I don't know if this is really relevant, maybe. When I was there just a couple of days ago, I noticed, and I did look at both of those. It sounded like there were more peepers in the eastern pool than there were in the western pool. That may be consistent. That was, that western, eastern pool was not disturbed.
Right.
The western was. So does that make sense?
It does, because they off, they, the return to the pool that they've used over years. But, but when young leave a pool, they, in, in future years, they may search out a new pool. So that should, they should repopulate this pool. It may take a little bit of time.
When will we start to see some of the results for that? Would that be in late April?
Yes, I, we should see, we're right at the time where this is all going to start, where we should, there, we were out at a site in Newtown today where we found eggs. I wasn't there personally, but someone else from my office, so within the next week or so, we should start to see activity on this site.
Okay. Is that, would you see that flooding is, is from the natural flooding, or is that from the pumping out of the quarry?
That's from the pumping.
Okay.
Yes.
And was the water quality tested? Is the water in the quarry?
I do not believe it's been test, well, actually, I don't know if that.
I can answer. Yeah, that, that is the rainwater that we are directing to a low point at the quarry. So it's just what the natural mother nature brings us. It's not from a well or sump or anything. It is just from the water that runs. We let it settle, and then we pump it up.
Okay. I guess I got one last question. The pump from the well, is that being repaired for summer season use? Is that a plan to put that back into use?
Yes. So we, again, it was, William's office had suggested we get as much water as quickly as we could up there during this period, which is, you know, the important breeding period. So we've had some good rain and the snow melt. We let that settle up and pumped it out. But yes, we will be continuing to pump from the well during the rest of the seasons.
I have no more questions.
I have a question. From the beginning of this restoration project, how are you schedule-wise tracking based on what your expectation was to where you actually are now?
Bill, if you want to?
Sure. Is that a question regarding rehydrating the wetland or bringing the soil up in the quarry pit to a certain elevation?
Actually, both. So you could address them separately, but I'm just wondering how we are time-wise, based on what you expected.
The rehydrating the wetland, I think what, as I, it was my belief that what was most critical was having that ponded water right now and getting it to a point where we had that ponded water right before the breeding season. So it's good that we're there. It wasn't certain how long that would take, but we're, we're there now.
From a, sorry, from a site standpoint, we're out there once a week, if not more. And I would say they're on or ahead of schedule. I mean, they've filled quarry floor about 50 feet in what has it been, eight, nine months max? So I would say on or ahead of schedule. I mean, some of the photos that Bill from EnSafe showed really document the progress that's been made on the site in terms of an earthwork operation standpoint. Bill, just focus on that. Sorry, I won't go ahead.
I would say that we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Again, the large pond that was at the end has been filled in, compacted, tested. The large pile has been gone through. The only thing that we have is we have some additional piles of fill, all natural to the site that we're waiting to spread. But besides that, you know, sooner than later, we'll be ready to market the site. But it is vastly improved from even when you guys had seen it last fall.
Thank you.
Originally, we were talking obviously about the, using the well to hydrate the wetlands, and apparently the well can't get enough water up to it. Is there a plan to, to increase the yield or drill another well for future, future years?
A bigger pump is on order, probably be installed in the next week or two. But we have sufficient rainwater that, again, we've sort of designed the drainage to go to basin, settle out. We've been pumping that up because it was important to get it. If everybody remembers, last summer was historically very dry. And the eastern wetlands and the western wetlands, again, up on the ridge, both followed suit. They, they've sort of looked like each other. The eastern wetlands didn't have much, if any, ponding water. It had moisture under, under the leaves. So I think we, we pumped up that 100,000 gallons of water, sort of kept us where we are. We are planning to add more in the future, but we've been able to sort of monitor the two wetlands, because I have unencumbered and encumbered right next to each other. So we, we have, we have a pretty good source to look. But yes, we will start pumping. You know, we have rainwater right now. In the middle of last summer, we didn't have that ponding water down in the quarry. But we will have the well to continue to pump into the western wetlands. But, um, we will have the well to continue to pump, uh, into the, uh, western wetlands.
And the others, any questions?
I think that's it from us. Uh, we appreciate your time. Um, progress is going great out on the site from a civil engineering standpoint. Um, you're all welcome to take a look whenever. Um, that's about it. Arnold, Bill, anything else on your end?
I don't think so. Uh, look, uh, as we, as we develop, you know, uh, what we're going to do with the property, we will be back to you guys. Uh, or commission. Uh, I have a feeling a few times, but, uh, right now, I think, uh, if, uh, the report card that Bill and, uh, William Kenny would tell you that we're, we're doing the right things and moving this forward. Gentlemen.
Thank you, everyone. Unless there's any more questions, I'll take off.
Good night.
Good night.
Take care, Bill.
Take care, everyone.
All right. So now we're on to the minutes.
There are none, Mr. Chairman.
And so, uh, Regulation Amendment Committee.
Yeah, it's still a work in progress.
I'll get that the next time. Okay. Public Outreach Committee, um, really don't have, but what did we say last? What's he saying about bicentennial thing?
You're, you're going to team up with the, uh, conservation.
That was an idea, but did you, did you reach out to them?
I, uh, I placed a call and, uh, I am expecting a follow-up. So I'll, uh, give you an update at the next meeting.
All right. Sounds good. All right. So I can make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, Mr. Lindstrom, second.
Um, a second.
Mr. Masaraco, all favor?
Aye.
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 All right, this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-three PM.